Run a tight meeting and that was, that was a forethought. Thank you. So I do want to ask if there are any members of the media present that we, that you would introduce yourself? Okay. And again, mute your cell phones. And if you are wanting to speak during public participation, there are cards at the back of the room. If you'll just fill one of those out. So we'll know who you are and give you a chance to speak to our board. Just reminder, board members, please turn your mics on when you're speaking and turn them off when you're finished. The other thing I want to say is that when we do the awards ceremony, after we do the gold of the Crystal Apple Awards, we would like all award winner winners to come forward because we'd like a group shot with the board members with your awards. I'll remind you of that later as well. So now we have our principal, Tammy Rasmussen. If she would, she's going to share some insights regarding student literacy, math pathway to graduation and goals for this school year.
Hello, welcome everyone. It's so good to see you. So many lovely faces in the audience. And just so grateful that you're all here. Thank you to our green staff for all they did to prepare for today. We love having people come into our home and it feels special and we want to roll out the red carpet when you come. So it was important to us. Green dragon with your gnarly ways, eating asparagus all your days. Biting harsh straws with your haze, writing your Shakespearean plays. Ice cold snow has turned you blue, wrens in your ears cheering you and me too. Sweet of them not to make a shoe, dragon. Your loyalty to me is true. Green dragon of the ice and snow with your extraterrestrial happy glow. Poet of my heart, as you know, do take to the skies. Now please, safe go. We're so glad you're here. We love this school. I love the school. I'm going to share some celebrations. I'm going to share some goals, but this is a wonderful place to learn. It's a great place to spend your day and thank you for being here. I think we have a slide. That's our goals. It's your goals. It's the district goals. We all share it together and that's so important. A shared goal is important to me as a principal. I know it's important to our students. When I say to my students, it's my job to keep you safe. That's right. They know it. And we mean it. Safety is important to me. Their safe minds, their safe hearts, our safe bodies, our safe environment here at school. So we work hard on safety. It's one of our first schools that we work on at school. How do we calm ourselves if we're having a big emotion? So we work on composure and then we also work on kindness. So you'll, you would hear that throughout each of our messages throughout the day, how our students gather themselves when they're feeling a yucky feeling or really excited. How do they take care of their friends with a safe body in the hallways? How do we show kindness? And as I shared with the board, this month, it's all about service. So we take our eyes off ourselves. We look up, we notice the world and then we do something about it. So if we see a problem, we're going to solve it because dragons take action. So at Green, all green students feel safe and valued and they have the ability to learn and they're learning a lot. They can thrive with high expectations and compassion that will lead to a positive, resilient and engaged learner. And we see that happening. It's really exciting to watch. And the art that happens in, in the classrooms, the writing you saw in the hallways, it's not by accident. Our teachers are incredible technicians. They work hard with the kids to make learning happen every day and it's very intentional when it happens. So our data shows that we have a lot of work to do. This is my second year at Green and I love a good challenge. And I know that structures and routines and systems are what will help us. So we worked really hard last year to put a master schedule in place that built time in for every student get what they need. So we have small group time, we have intervention and acceleration time. We organize all of our adults on the purpose of instruction as much as we can. We do have to feed them meals and get them off to recess and help them get to the bathroom, but we've got to maximize instructional time. So our data showed that we have some work to do in that area. In reading, we were at 17% of our students reading on grade level. We have, I can't read that number, but that, that looks like 6% to me doing math at grade level. And our goal for graduation is to have 68% attendance and that's not great either. Those numbers worry me. And that's why when I champion this school in our community at the grocery store, the volleyball games, I do it because I know that's not going to happen by accident. We cannot improve that if we don't come together around the common purpose, common goals, common language. And we're working really hard to do that. So our goals have a 7% increase in literacy on our OSAS test. So I want to tell you a little bit about that. Our OSAS test last year in third grade, we actually surpassed the district average in third grade. So these numbers for third grade, third, fourth and fifth grade are based on our OSAS numbers. Yes, sir. Oregon State Assessment. So the state test that all third, fourth and fifth graders will take. It's a consistent assessment that our students are assessed on. And so that test result, we're going to improve, improve, improve by 7%. And like I said, our, our third grade set the bar really high. We saw incredible growth last year. Our state report card showed a 10% increase last year. So we're pretty proud of that in both areas, reading and math. So I'm setting the bar at 7%, but I actually have big dreams. So I think we can hit another 10. But we're going to keep it, keep it, keep it manageable here. Not overwhelm our system. Math, again, a 7% increase on that state test. Math is challenging and you can see we're starting on our iReady data at 6%. We've already seen incredible gains for our students and we have our testing happening in January. I expect that's going to make a nice boost back up. And then our regular attenders, we're going to increase that to 71%. So when we're here every day on time, great things happen. When we stay all day, even greater things happen. So we're working with our families to get their students here on time and to keep them here at school all day because that's important. Lots of plans to meet these goals. You know, we gotta have some fun. We gotta have some joy in our day. We get to, to learn all sorts of skills. These are just three of the big goals we have as a school community. So literacy, we put routines in place for everything from how we line up to how we go get a bottle of water, to how we sharpen our pencil. We also have routines in place for how we do whole group and small group instruction. Our teachers are providing the structures and routines around small group instruction. They know their students, they know what they need, and I want them really engaged in how we target the deficit skills of our students. So they work hard at that. Our teachers are also collecting really important data, interim data on how students are performing and making sure that we are catching them up. So it's not just enough to make a year's growth. Some of our kids need more than a year's growth. So we've got to, we've got to multiply those efforts. And then lots of professional development. I'm so proud of our teachers. I think we might've had the most teachers at summer PD. Am I right? I don't know. I'm going to call, I'm going to call it. I think we had, we had a lot of teachers getting amazing professional learning this summer. They want to learn. They want to keep growing. So our Orton-Gillingham strategies and dyslexia, our math trainings, people were at the five day institutes. And that just makes them stronger teachers. They're already amazing at what they do, but we're just going to keep getting better. And goal two around math, we have our whole group instruction has to be aligned to the standards. It has to be aligned to our district practices. So we're working on what's called the C, the R and the A. So we want all students to understand how to represent the mathematics concretely as a representation and then with the abstract, the algorithm, the number sentence. So we work really hard with our kids to really make sense of the mathematics and our teachers are using strategies to make that happen. And we've done training. I have teacher leaders in the building who work with us to do that. Use the habits of mind and interaction, which is part of our teachers' development group work and increase student talk in the classroom. So less teacher talking, more students talking. Our path to graduation, it's got to feel like they belong. They got to know they're a part of something really important. They got to know that we care about them. So our students are greeted every morning. They have morning meeting routines. They talk about the things that they care about, the things that are important to them. They take care of their first hour needs. If our students are worrying about something, they can get it off their chest and their heart. So they can focus on instruction. They need an extra hug. They need a morning breakfast. Somebody to talk to at breakfast time. We have breakfast club. We have a lunch bunch. We have a lot of ways for kids to connect with different staff across our building throughout the day. And then community events, we have lots of people using our building and that brings me so much joy. I want this building to be filled with voices and people in our community all day long into the evening. It's important to me. This is a gathering place. We have wonderful resources here. So we have a garden club. We have a choir after school. They're going to perform next week for Linus Oaks and Riverview Terrace and a group home in our neighborhood. We have amazing things, robotics club that happens in the morning before school. And so our students are getting involved and engaged here at school. Thank you. This is a great place to come. I hope you'll come and join me on a day. We have Friday night, we have an event here from six to seven. You're welcome to join us. It's family game night. We're going to play board games and shoots and ladders and make Christmas crafts and there might even be a visit from Santa. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Always, always love her enthusiasm and her passion. Just quick, quickly, if you wanted to address the board during public participation, just reminder to fill out a card. Now would be a good time to do that. And now we have our wonderful high school students. And Emma Rethwell and Olivia Stewart-Cliff, she's special. She's sitting next to her father who's a board member. And they are very, very busy and we are so thankful that they are here to give their report. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. So a few weeks ago, we returned from a great Thanksgiving break. And this December, we have been preparing for festivities before our winter break. And so we have been preparing many exciting events to stay busy before our holiday season. In leadership, our leadership class has been preparing for our winter week festivities, including decorating our school's front entrance with some good old holiday spirit. Winter week includes dress up days and fun lunchtime activities the week before winter break, which is this upcoming week. We are also excited to officially announce our winter dance, which will be a semi-formal with the theme of Winter Wonderland. It will be held at RHS on January 11th. Last Thursday, our class had the opportunity to participate in a leadership conference in Grants Pass, which allowed our students to learn and improve their leadership skills with many different schools and age groups. We closed our first club grant cycle of the year, giving money for club projects ranging from FBLA students attending regionals here soon to service clubs and Angel Tree programs. Another cycle will open in February.
Good evening, guys. The basketball season has just begun. The girls team had their first game last Wednesday. It was during the evening at home. And the boys had their season opener on Wednesday at McMinnville. Wrestling season has also started with three hour long practices every day after school. That's some dedication right there. Their first official match is against McNary High School this Friday. This year, about 60 wrestlers have joined the team. This year, 52 students went out for the swim team. They have their first official meet tomorrow in Salem and competed in a relay meet to begin their season. The last SAT of this year was given on December 7th at RHS. The FCC LA canned food drive has been going well. So far they have collected almost 800 cans for their donations. It's pretty good if you ask me. The school musical opened last week, performing an adaptation of A Christmas Carol created by our drama director, Mr. Pennington. Key Club is helping the Salvation Army and participating in bell ringing this year. Photography, fine arts and yearbook students have worked on display at Umpqua Valley Arts Center right now through December 20th. Both our choir and band direct, I'm sorry, band programs are preparing for winter concerts before the end of December. Is there any, any follow-ups on any of that? Or did I do a good job?
You both did a fabulous job. We are so proud of you. Thank you for coming. Good job. We are going to now have our student and staff recognitions. And again, stay afterward and we'll take a, just a real quick photo. And now we have Director Keith Cubic. He is going to be making the student rec, student recognition awards.
Oh, it's on. This evening, we're recognizing three students and the first one on the agenda that I saw was a Green Elementary Stool, School student, Kalina Rodriguez.
Yes, with each award, family, friends, fellow coworkers, everybody come up.
Kalina is a student, is student of the year at Green Elementary. She's a perfect example of the brave values and school works on each day. Her teacher, Ms. Johnson, states that Kalina is dedicated, determined and resilient in pursuing her goals. Her willingness to overcome challenges, embrace learning and strive for success is very commendable. The school is happy to celebrate her hard work and hopes this inspires her to continue to push boundaries and pursue her goals. Kalina brightens the green community with her thoughtful actions, encouraging words and commitment to excellence. Congratulations, Kalina.
If the award winners would stand up here, that way our camera can catch you so people at home can see.
Well, this is a really fun part of being on the school board and seeing the top notch people that come to visit us from each of the schools. The second person is from Fremont Middle Schools. For some reason, I'm stuck on his first name. Gideon. Gideon. That's what it is. Gideon Lander. Gideon is a tremendously talented and intelligent student who is funny, kind, courteous and delightful to teach. He loves to challenge himself with advanced classes like eighth grade honors math and he found Epiphany, Fremont's top choir. He studies piano and bassoon and is active in his church. He has such a great sense of humor and enjoys making people laugh. Gideon is also an outstanding student. He's a leader, responsible and hardworking. Gideon consistently shows a commitment to excellence. He comes to class on time and is ready to go for learning each day, setting a good example for others. He comes in with a smile and positive attitude each day. Gideon deserves this award for he always has the epic qualities Fremont is looking for in all students. Fremont is lucky to have Gideon as part of their school family. Congratulations. The third student we're recognizing this evening is from Roseburg High School, Brianna Smith, ninth grade. Brianna exemplifies the ideal student athlete, balancing academics and athletics with remarkable dedication. A freshman, she maintains high grades, including an A in physics while excelling in cross country and preparing for track. Brianna's work ethic is outstanding. She embraces challenges, seeks clarification when needed and always aims for improvement. She is considerate, courteous to her peers and a genuine contributor to group success. Her enthusiasm for learning, combined with her thoughtful questions inspires those around her. Teachers and classmates value Brianna's positive attitude, patience and leadership. She approaches each day with gratitude and a desire to grow, embodying the qualities of a seasoned motivated, motivated student despite being early in her high school journey. Teachers feel privileged to have her in their classes and are excited about her promising future. Brianna's dedication, kindness and humility make her a standout example of what it means to thrive both academically and personally. Congratulations.
And next we have our crystal apple winners. Our first one is Lori Peterson, an instructional assistant here at Green Elementary. Y'all come up now. Come on, if you're, you're clapping. We're all family here. When Green staff consider the impact that Lori has had on the school, they have to complete a lot of math. With 44 years of service to this district, they believe that she has had the opportunity to teach over 11,000 students how to read, be safe on the playground, be respectful and have lots of fun. She supports students in the title classroom but can be found in the cafeteria, helping supervise lunch routines. She is the number one referee for basketball or gaga ball. And she is always there to encourage and support students in the halls. Her stories are legendary. Her instruction is always engaging and her love for Green Elementary will carry on because of her steadfast support to this community. And her crystal apple says, a lifetime dedicated to students. 44 years of dragging. Congratulations. And now we are going to celebrate Ellie Weiskiver. She is a DLC teacher here. That's right. Come on, mama. Ellie has created a community at Green that is committed to noticing every child for their strengths. She builds her instructional program in the developmental learning center based upon each child. This helps her see the unique and profound ways they can build connections and community within and outside of her classroom. Green staff have all been a witness to the many celebrations of, of student growth this year. Ellie's smile and laugh helped the school see the joy that learning can bring. She is a masterful collaborator who is able to help all teachers find tools and supports to maximize the potential of every child. Her belief in everyone at Green is helping to grow an inclusive community we can all be proud of. Her crystal apple says, kind, caring and so inclusive. Congratulations, Ellie. Okay, if we could have all award winners come forward and our board come forward, we'd like to get a group shot with them, please. We are now going to take a brief recess. If you are celebrating and not staying for the meeting, we would ask you to take your celebration outside so we don't disturb the, the rest of the business meeting. Congratulations to all award winners. We'll begin again shortly. Congratulations to award winners. We'll begin again shortly. Okay, we will resume the business part of our meeting. Is there anyone online or anyone here that would like to speak to the board during the public participation part of the meeting? Okay, does not look like we have any this time. Just FYI, for future reference, you can always email us or call or whatever to reach out to us. We want to hear from people. And now, Director Corden, would you please do the review of agenda and communications to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. In terms of the review of the agenda, since its last publication, we do have one, you'll notice this in the consent agenda, a math teacher higher at Roseburg High School. And so that has been added to the agenda, referenced in the consent agenda, and item number one. And in terms of communications of the board, just want to wish Director Leoni safe travels as he's away this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to note in the consent agenda that we have a lengthy listing of gifts to the district. Our sincere thank you for your generosity to our public schools. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
That we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, we have three resolutions from the Oregon School Board Association. The first one that we will discuss, or the first one, is they're wanting to increase the OSBA membership dues. And I'll just, you guys have had the information available. All those in favor of accepting this increase? Okay, all those opposed or who reject this increase? Okay, it is unanimous. Resolution number two would create a pride caucus and designate a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Committee. Those who want to accept this? Those who reject it?
No.
Okay, it's unanimous. Resolution three updates the OSBA's bylaws to amend them according to the prior two resolutions. It would appear that since we have rejected both of those, seems like we know what the vote will be on three. But do you vote to accept this resolution? Those who oppose it?
No.
Reject it? Okay, great. It's unanimous. And now we have Phoenix interim director Lori Newton, principal Corey Bernard, and Hope at ASINC. ASINC? ASINC, that's a good way to do it, Assistant Executive Director. This is their second check-in for the Phoenix Charter School.
Hi, welcome. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. Because I want to officially and formally thank the Roseburg School Board, the Roseburg School Administration, many of your staff members for the support that we've received this fall in our first trimester. You guys always said, "The support is there, just ask." We asked, and we got a lot of support. We're very grateful for that. Looking forward to the rest of the year where I will remain interim executive director through June 30th. I remember the beginning of the year saying, "Oh, no, 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 I'm retired." Something about Phoenix gets under your skin, and you just want to stay and help our kids. Oh, yes, in a good way, yes. So we have felt very welcomed and a valued partner with the district. And it's just, things are getting better and better as a result, and we're very grateful. The second thing is, it's very sad. Oh, okay. Emily Hopfer was new to us last April in our Farm and Food Program. She had great goals, hit the ground running, just really had an impact on the staff and the kids, and tragically died in a hiking accident on November 24th. And because she had such a short amount of time on earth and as an educator, I've known her since she was eight. But in the short amount of time she had, she had a big impact. And I want to spread that word as much as possible because she left a legacy for us to continue and to honor her, to expand the impact she had. I'm going to sing her praises every chance I get, and this is one of them. Emily had a five-year plan ready to go. She implemented the Student Work Program where kids actually were employed in her program in food production, food marketing, the school lunch program supplies. She gave credit for botany, earth science, PE. The kids would earn those credits towards graduation while they were working in her program, also learning employment and life skills. Their five-year plan, we intend to use as our blueprint going forward to continue her dream. Thank you. I'll turn it over now to Corey Bernard, our principal, for an update on data.
So I have our attendance data here. You can see I'm comparing it to our 2023-24 school data. We were at twenty-one percent of regular attenders, which is not good. Currently, right now, from the start of the school year till the end of our first trimester, we again are at twenty-one percent. We are working towards improving that. Do you want to go to the next slide? So we're actively trying to reengage our students and help eliminate those barriers that are causing this low attendance. I have Pathways Teachers, which is essentially like our homeroom. Building connections with parents with open and regular communication. I'm requiring them to communicate with parents about attendance, progress of students, and to report that back to me. So upping that engagement with the teachers and building that connection. I have our Safety and Wellness Manager, who is making personal calls home when students are absent three or more days. So we are constantly monitoring our attendance, reaching out, trying to find out what's going on, why they're not attending, and help eliminate any barriers if there are some. And we've started hosting some school-wide events to encourage more engagement with the parents and the students. We've done open house. We've had two financial aid nights. So we're really trying to get our parents and our students more engaged in the school to kind of help bring that attendance up. You know, typically, we've had pretty poor attendance, and our data shows that. But we are trying ways to get the students more engaged, get a bigger buy-in from the parents and the students, and make a better connection so that they feel they need to be there. Next slide. On track for graduation, so the 24-25 school year as of the end of trimester one, out of our ninth graders, we have twenty-three out of twenty-four on track for graduation. So ninety-five point eight percent are on track for graduation. I've gone through transcripts. They are accurate. Our other, we've had three seniors who have already graduated with their GEDs. And we will be reviewing transcripts for our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders to get accurate data before the next board meeting to figure out exactly how many of them are on track for graduation. Next. We are implementing our STAR 360 assessments. These are diagnostic measurements that I'm requiring the Pathway Teachers to administer three times a year. We did it in September. We are currently doing it right now in December. They're being administered to all students to prepare for our Oregon State Assessment. These diagnostic assessments give, are their detailed computer-based adaptive assessments, very similar to the Oregon State Assessments. And they monitor the student's progress in reading and mathematics. They provide us with very detailed reports and a dashboard that helps us kind of personalize an educational plan and make some learning targets for students that are not at grade level. These assessments cover essential academic areas, and they help predict that performance on our state standardized assessments. We're using these also to help get our students more prepared and to see that online testing more often. The more the more they have practice using online assessments, the more comfortable they're going to be, the more relaxed they'll be when it comes time for that state assessment, their eighth and junior year. We are giving them to all students so that we can monitor that. We're using these to also help with writing our IEPs, our 504s, and just basic goals for our students. Next. With this, we have our Oregon State Assessments. Yesterday, I went through my training to train my staff. So my testing schedule for the eighth and 11th graders, first of all, I'm going to test them in small groups of fifteen. I'll start with science in March, and then my English Language Arts in April, starting with our computer adaptive, and then the performance task. And then we'll move on to our math one at the end with the computer adaptive, and then the performance task. Data shows that testing the students in smaller groups is more productive. They do better. It's more of a relaxing environment. So I am going to be hosting the testing. I've got fourteen years' experience giving state testing. I feel very comfortable doing it, and I feel very confident that I can help alleviate some of the anxiety with the students. I will be training two or three other teachers to kind of help with that because it is also proven that students that test with teachers that they learn from do better in the testing environment. Next. This is just a review of our assessment data. I did present this at our last meeting. This was the data from the end of the school year. When I looked back at the data last week, more reports had came in. So the data did change a little bit based off of the Oregon State Assessment website. So you can see that in science, our 11th graders were at thirty percent meeting, which is levels three and four, the green and blue. The state average was thirty-one, so we did pretty well in our science. Our eighth graders need a lot of improvement. We only had five percent meeting. State average is twenty-six. So we're going to really work on building up our eighth graders. Next slide. Our English Language Arts are 11th graders. We had forty-two percent at levels three and four. State average was forty-eight percent. So we were doing pretty decent there. Our eighth graders, again, we need some improvement. Twenty-one percent at level three. State average is forty-two percent. So again, working on our eighth graders, building those skills. Next. Math is where we do need a lot of support. At our last meeting, I had said we had adopted new curriculum. I've got great resources for my math teacher. I am a former math teacher and currently am a math professor at UCC, so I am in her classroom, helping support her, helping support the students. Our 11th graders, we did not have any of them meet. The state average is twenty-one percent. I am hoping that we will have some meet this year. That is my goal. Eighth graders, they had five percent meet last year. State average twenty-six. So again, eighth graders need some improvement. So math, I am really focusing on supporting my math teacher and my eighth-grade teacher to help with bringing up those math scores. And that's all my data. Did you guys have any questions on? Yes?
On the on-track-for-graduation data? I'm not a statistician at all, but how, out of the, these are ninth graders, that twenty-three out of twenty-four are ninety-five percent on track to graduate?
So what it means is what I did, as I looked at our ninth graders, we do trimesters, not semesters. So a ninth grader at the end of their ninth grade year should have six credits or more to be on track for graduation. So at trimester, for us, that would mean they would have two credits or more to be on track for graduation. So out of our twenty-four ninth graders, twenty-three of them had two or more credits at the end of trimester one. And so that's the ninety-five point eight percent of our ninth graders. So that one, I'm still going to be working on. And they can still make that up by, because we do offer more credits than you need for graduation. So six would be on track. We do offer more. So the hope is that by the end of the ninth grade year, we will have all of them on track for graduation, which means they'll have six or more credits by the end of their ninth grade year.
Okay, it's just, it's kind of hard to picture the scores being so low that how credit is given and saying that that's checked off, that credit.
It's not checked off. We are just, we use our ninth graders as an indicator for our graduation. And so if we can start out strong, keeping them on track with having sufficient credits, the hope is that we can maintain that, and they'll be graduating on time. It is a little different to look at our data compared to yours because we are on trimester, whereas Roseburg High School and the school districts are usually on semesters. We will be moving towards that next year, so we will be more aligned where we will be doing semesters, just like Roseburg High School. We are also going to be offering like block classes, similar to the number of credits at Roseburg High School. So I am presenting a schedule to align that more so that when I do present data, it makes sense to the data that you guys are used to seeing because it's all based on semesters as opposed to a trimester. Because we've already awarded some credits because our trimester ended. Whereas Roseburg High, their trimester ends in January, so they haven't awarded any credits yet.
Okay, yeah, that would be, I would think it would be very beneficial.
Yes, I agree.
When did, when did Phoenix, has it always been on its trimester system or?
About six years. I did present to my board earlier in the year, and they did approve for us to move to semesters. So that is going to happen next school year. I am just now figuring out how to lay out my classes so that we can still, we have our food and farm crew that Emily ran, and we have an Oregon Youth Corps that another teacher runs. Those are on opposite days. So there is a little bit of a nuance to figure out how to offer classes where I have A and B days as opposed to seven classes five days a week. And so I've been kind of working, figuring out some things. I'm going to be meeting with Assistant Director Neil, or Ni, sorry, to kind of run some things by her, and I've been looking at other school districts. There's benefits and, you know, disadvantages to doing block scheduling, but I want to be able to align us more with what Roseburg High is doing, and I want to still be able to provide those program-based learning that Phoenix focuses on.
Yeah, I just didn't, when you, Phoenix gives credit and say that student has earned two credits this so far, is that this one per trimester, or how is that?
It's a third a credit per class.
Okay.
Because we do trimesters.
Okay.
So over all of their classes combined, it would be two credits. So each class would be a third of a credit.
And do they? And do they need to get a passing grade?
It would be the same, yes, it would be the same as Roseburg High, A, B, C, or D would be passing.
Okay.
So we use the same grading scale. Our difference is, is that we're trimesters, so we award, we award a third of a credit per class, whereas Roseburg High does a half a credit. And again, we're gonna be moving towards that in the fall.
Okay, thanks, thanks for explaining that.
Yeah. Any other questions on the data?
Thank you so much for your report, we appreciate it.
I just wanted to add, um, in addition to everything that we're doing, we, we're also, um, building enrollment and retention with our driver's ed program and our new welding program that we're implementing. And so we have a lot to offer, um, to build, again, our, our enrollment and our retention. So we're doing a lot of things there, it's very exciting.
Thank you, thank you again for your support.
Um, we now have our audit presentation, the acceptance of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial statements. The lead auditor, Aria Beddinger of KPD CPAs LLP, will present the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four financial statements.
There she is. Welcome.
You just need to make sure your mic is on.
There we go, second, cool. Okay, hi, thank you for having me. Um, so my name is Aria Beddinger, I'm an audit partner at KDP CPAs in Medford. And, uh, we were engaged to audit, uh, the district for fiscal year twenty-four and I'm here to present that audit. I'm sorry, do not have any thing for the, for the digital people, but for those of you who have a bound copy of the audit, um, if you want, you can go to the very, very last page, that is, I believe, page sixty-five. And, um, this is called the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, and this is essentially a summary of the audit reports and, um, and the audit that we conducted. So for this audit, uh, there are four reports that we issued. The first report is, um, the report on the basic financial statements, that's on page A1. And this is the overall, in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities in each major fund of the district as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So management is responsible for the presentation and fair prep, preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And our objectives as your auditors are, uh, to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement. Reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but is not absolute assurance.
Excuse me. Yes. Would, could you slow down?
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm just not getting any of it.
Public speaker, I get very nervous, but I will try.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so this is considered an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, and it is the highest form of assurance that we can provide. Uh, the next of report that we provide is a report under government auditing standards, and that is on page fifty-eight. Um, this report, my page. Uh, the purpose of this report is to describe the scope of our testing of internal control over financial reporting and compliance and the results of that testing, and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the district's internal control over financial reporting or on compliance. So that report's a little bit different because we don't provide an opinion. That being said, we did not identify, um, any material weaknesses, report any significant deficiencies. And additionally, there were no instances of non-compliance, um, that were disclosed during the audit. So while we don't provide an opinion, there was nothing noted that we would feel we needed to share. Uh, the third report, uh, is on page sixty. And this is a report on, uh, the federal awards that the district receives. Because the district, uh, spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding, they're required to have what's called a single audit, which is essentially a second audit that's done in conjunction with the financial statement audit. Um, we look at, uh, federal awards and we look at inter, internal controls over those federal awards and internal controls over compliance with those federal awards. Um, once again, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses um, in our audit of the federal awards. And we also did not, um, we did, did, should I say, internal controls and compliance, hopefully I said both. Um, and we also expressed an unmodified opinion on that report as well. Uh, the two test programs that were tested as major programs this year were the IDEA cluster and the Child Nutrition Cluster. Uh, the district qualified as a low-risk auditee under the criteria specified in the uniform guidance. And based on the results of this audit, we expect the district to be a low-risk auditee again next year. The fourth report that is not, uh, noted on this page, it's on page fifty-six, and this is a report um, under, uh, required by Oregon State Regulations. And this is the test of the district's compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grants, um, related to, uh, the Oregon Revised Statutes for Oregon Minimum Standards and Local Budget Law. Once again, nothing came to our attention that caused us to believe that the district was not in substantial compliance with those statutes. Um, so overall, this is a, a very clean audit, a very, a very good report. Um, we also have, uh, the other stapled uh, document that you have, which is a required communication to governance. So in addition to the audit itself, um, we provide you with this letter which summarizes our responsibilities regarding the fi, financial statement audit, um, as well as observations arising from our, from our audit that are significant and relevant to your responsibility as the board to oversee the financial reporting process. So there are, um, significant accounting policies, estimates and disclosures that we call out within this communication, um, that would not be evident within the audit perhaps itself, but something that we just want you to be aware of. Uh, for example, there were no new accounting policies adopted during the year and the application of existing policies did not change. It was very consistent year over year, nothing that we feel we need to call out to you, um, regarding any, there's no new GAZB pronouncements adopted, that's one other thing. Uh, regarding accounting estimates, uh, estimates are inherent in any financial statements. They can be sensitive because of their significance, the financial statements, and because they involve management's judgment. So when it comes to estimates, we evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop those estimates. And we have determined they are reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. Uh, the primary estimates affecting the financial statements are related to the property tax receivables, um, depreciation in relationship to fixed assets and estimates related to, uh, pension and other post-employment benefits. We also call out some significant disclosures in the financial statements. Um, you can read those for yourselves, they're just within there. Um, over the course of the audit, um, we didn't have any disagreements with management. Uh, if there, there, if there were any adjustments noted, they were not material and management and us as auditors have agreed on any adjustments and they've been posted to the accounts. Um, as part of our responsibilities and management and the board's responsibilities, we are required to maintain our independence, um, and we all have our responsibility and share in that role and responsibility. Um, overall, that's basically it. Thank you, I apologize for rushing through, but, um, we do appreciate being your auditors. We, um, really do enjoy working with the district, but if you have any questions.
So what you're saying is we run a pretty tight ship?
You have a, you have a good crew. That has been our experience.
How often do you have audits of this caliber?
So we have the spectrum. Um, I would say what I do appreciate working with this district is that, um, I appreciate that the books are clean and that is great, but I also appreciate the responsiveness and, um, mutual respect for each other's time and, and that collaboration. So I sometimes, you know, everybody's busy, everyone has a lot going on. So we always understand as auditors that an audit is on top of everyone's regular job and that can be hard, but I do appreciate, um, that the team here really has a lot of, uh, integrity, in my opinion, what I have seen, um, and works hard to make sure they're doing the right job.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
And doing this in person, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I also wanna thank, um, Cheryl and her team for, for the due diligence throughout the year and especially Danielle for leading this audit this year. She did a phenomenal job and we really appreciate it. And thank you for working well with Ari and her team. So we appreciate you. At this time, we're on item number five to, uh, we have a report of the long-range facility report. And, uh, we need to, to accept it. You've had this packet and you've had a chance to review it. And, um, so I would entertain a motion to approve the long-range facility report.
I'd move to, uh, accept the long-range facilities report.
Is there?
Uh, just a couple of other, this will assist us in continuing our work. Uh, it provides us useful, useful information as appropriate and will allow us to submit materials to ODE for grants.
Okay, is there a second? Sorry.
I say.
Do we have discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, I do have, uh, Susan here out from, um, Denver. Thanks for being here, Susan's here by the way. Thank you for coming. Um, Susan, any, uh, any words for the board on the approval of this, uh, report?
Great that you guys are all prepared and you're planning, you know, in anticipation of where you want to be in the next eighteen months, twenty-four months. And I think this is a great strike.
Right.
Thank you very much, you know, I thought you looked familiar, but it just wasn't clicking, so. Yes, yeah. So thank you so much for coming.
Uh, just to note, my motion was to accept the report, not to approve it.
Yeah, yes, yes. Um, we now, um, need to approve one budget committee applicant to serve on the remaining term vacated by Keith Cupick when he was appointed to the school board. This term expires, um, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we've had two applicants, one from Mr. Mike Schofield and one from Mr. David Campos. You have had those letters and reviewed, um, their resumes. Um, so I would entertain a motion to nominate a candidate to serve the remaining term vacated by Mr. Keith Cupick on the RPS Budget Committee.
Um, I will motion to nominate Mike Schofield.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Thank you, any discussion?
I have a quick thing, I think we have, sorry, I think we have two excellent, uh, candidates here and it's unfortunate that we only have one opening. It's unusual because genuinely we're trying to fill them. So, um, and then we have a motion and a second. So the gentleman that doesn't get it tonight, um, I hope they apply because if, there will be another, there'll, something will, will come along and there'll be another, uh, opening. Um, so it's, it's, it's always great to see that you're getting really top-notch folks wanting to come on board. So I would just really encourage, um, whoever doesn't win tonight or gets nominated or the vote, would reapply when there's an opening.
Agreed.
Madam Chair, I, just looking at the applications, uh, both, both gentlemen are in our district, both have public process knowledge in law. Um, both have accounting backgrounds, they're similar and well-qualified. Uh, Mrs. Schofield does come with more school-related experience in his portfolio. Um, but we would be well-served by either of the candidates. Uh, our budget is complicated, it has been audited, we're doing well. Um, but I just commend both people for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So we will now vote, all those in favor of, um, Mr. Mike Schofield? Aye? Great, unanimous, um, Mr. Schofield will fill that, that, um, that seat. We would hope that Mr. Campos will keep an eye on it and apply for the next opening. Um, we also need to renew the budget committee members, Thomas Nelson, who's been serving since twenty fourteen, and Mickey Hall, who's been serving since twenty twenty-three. Those, uh, they want to re-up. So I would entertain a motion to renew budget committee members, Thomas Nelson and Mickey Hall as requested.
Move to reappoint, uh, Ms. Hall and Mr. Nelson.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye? Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Okay, uh, we now have committee reports from Curriculum and Instruction, um, Committee Chair Anne Crimmits.
Yeah, just, um, reporting on our last meeting, uh, November twentieth. Um, as, uh, as Tammy spoke to us too about the importance of literacy, um, and the, um, challenge for all of our schools, uh, we, we talked about that, uh, quite a bit and, um, we've even got four out of five of our kindergartners that are gonna be coming in are coming in at just very minimal, um, reading literacy level. So we've got our work cut out for us and we're starting young. So, um, this is what we, we spent quite a bit of time on talking about how, how we can best address that. Um, we all are updating our K through five reading curriculums and right now they're being reviewed. Um, and there again, our emphasis on phonics, we've, that's been a tried and true, um, method for reading and we are strongly, uh, emphasizing that in the curriculum, curriculum that we choose. So those options will be piloted in the spring and the board, um, will, uh, be presented to the board for approval at the end of the school year. So there's, uh, a few of those that we'll be piloting and looking at and we will choose, um, with, you know, with, uh, looking at it very closely with the best eye for that literacy phonics, um, in mind. Um, the, we also discussed the, uh, updated curriculum that we're gonna be looking at for health curriculum for sixth through twelfth. And, um, the district is prioritizing a curriculum that meets standards, um, but also is aligned with our strategic plan for this district. And one of our paramount, um, aspects of that plan is transparency with parents. So knowing that this is a, it can be a possible, um, subject that we want the parents to be well-advised and so with the piloting, uh, that will go on with this program, the parents will have adequate time to review the curriculum options and, uh, give us their input and we greatly value that. And so, um, we'll be updating you on that, um, that pilot of those curriculum options will be taking place in the spring as well. So that's what we'll be working on, um, with, with Dr. Weber and with, uh, Director Ni to get the best that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Crimmits. Um, and now we have Superintendent Corden with the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, great to be here with everybody, appreciate everybody here tonight. Um, I'll just wanna again say thank you to Green for being a great host and it's awesome to see all this. Yeah, I know a lot goes into this and so thank you for letting us kind of be close to your kids and community by being here. It's lovely and so thank you, we've got people to thank here and obviously Tammy and Sherry. But, you know, come on Heather, you know, you're part of this too. All right, um, I have a short report for you tonight, uh, but an important report tonight. All right, um, I have a short report for you tonight, uh, but an important report tonight for you. I want to start first of all with our strategic plan and talk to you just real quickly about some of the. The things we see across our district in terms of care, support, instruction. It's important to see. For you to see and for us to see in our community to see that these are. These are really verbs. They're action words and I want you to see some of the things. Every time I have a chance to talk to people in the community or a board. I could do, I, there's a hundred examples I can give you. I'll just pick out a few, um, tonight. That highlight how amazing the kids we serve are, how incredible our staff is, what a fantastic community we have. And so a couple of things for, um, first one here, uh, nutrition services, um. And thank you Lauren for tonight and Lauren's been doing a fantastic job, but. Um, and in addition to that, they provided special Thanksgiving meals to our kids this year across the whole district, which was fantastic. The high school team, uh, Team Leo and Scorpio, you've heard of, of these teams before. They place. Not only across the state, but across the country and in the world. Uh, there was the SOAR League, which is the Southern Oregon Robotics League. Uh, Leo plays first, Scorpio plays third and that recently that meet. Um, R H S again, um, they welcome seventeen Vietnam veterans. From Chapter Eight oh five. Pretty awesome. It was a living history event where, um. Community members came in, were, were able to connect with these kids. An awesome multi-generational opportunity. For these adults that have incredible living life experiences to connect with the youth. And also for these kids to see, um, to be in the presence of these people who have incredible experiences. Who have helped foster. The ability to teach kids and have a free country. These are really important opportunities in our community. We don't do enough multi-generational, but I will tell you what happens in these events. Our kids. Come away astounded. At the living history in our community. And also our community members, um, who oftentimes don't interact with students. Also come away astounded at how incredible kids are. So great, um, example of, um. Great instruction happening there and, uh, Melrose, um. The students marked the Native American History Month. And they were, they created these awesome button blankets. That are used as kind of ceremonial robes and a good example of how our students are, are reaching out across the community. I want to talk tonight about safety. Um, safety is a core, um, it's been a core, um. Ongoing support for safety. Uh, our responsibility, when we stop and think of what our, what our parents do, the trust they put in us, the most important things they have. Are their children. And when they drop them off with us, at a minimum, we have to get them back as good as we got them. At the minimum, we want to return them better than we got them. But safety is, is paramount for us. It's really important. I know we did a tour of Green today and talked about some of the. Safety elements with the vestibule and some fans saying, oh, that's been great. To kind of hardening the exterior in a soft way, but making sure we have controlled access and processes and systems. And we've got, you know, Jeff here. Has been helping with that district wide, which has been amazing for us. And thinking about Raptor and all these systems we have. We have a responsibility to make sure as, um, as a superintendent, I'll say I carry this responsibility. To make sure that in the event of an active aggressor that we have. Um, the school resource officers, trained professionals, police officers who could quickly, um, address an incident. Um, we have had in the past. Two school resource officers from Roseburg Police Department. With their staffing issues that has waned to one. And, um, last year we worked, uh, to secure an additional school resource officer from Douglas County Sheriff's Office. They were primarily and have been primarily working with our county schools, so Green, Sunny Slope, Melrose and Winchester. Uh, last year, and this has been kind of ongoing intermittent frustration of mine and many of us is that, um, the city has been unable. To, um, fulfill that agreement. It, um, puts a resource officer in our district consistently. Um, so we're going to, uh, let R P D kind of focus on staff recruitment, which is what they need to do. And we are now, um. Working full time with two school resource officers from Douglas County Sheriff's Office that will be working in our schools. They will work under the direction of Jeff Ikenbush. We still will have support from R P D, which will be important. Um, but, uh, we are, uh, moving forward with a, um, an agreement with them. Um, with the sheriff's office, uh, want to give a shout out to. Cheryl's been helping with this. Jess has been helping with this. Sheriff Handlin, Under Sheriff Freeze, Brad Odell and others have kind of helped us with this and. And I think it's a, a good opportunity. It's a little bit different structure. But most importantly, it puts consistent school resource officer assets in our schools. Close to our kids. And that makes a difference. It makes a difference when you get to a school and you see. Um, a presence of an officer there. Uh, and I'm grateful to say publicly grateful to live in a community that doesn't shy away from the critical need to have school resource officers in our buildings. Um, I want to thank Susan and the board for, um, and, and all those who have worked in our community to help shape, um. Or help shape the conversations about, about what we need to focus on in terms of facilities. We do have aging facilities. It's not a surprise. I am so thankful of how we've managed those, but they are aging. And we do need to make some decisions as a community. The board needs to make some decisions. The district needs to make some decisions and I appreciate the efforts we put into that. Our building the sites team will take this report and move forward with this. In terms of our next steps and we have work to do there. Um, I'll talk about budget in a little bit, but we need to, um. I'm glad we have the information we have so that we, from our community and our board and, and others, so we can start in that process moving forward. So I'm excited for. That process and, and figuring out which things are most important and what we'll, what we'll start to invest in. Let me talk a little bit about budget. And I was reflecting on this a little bit. It's kind of like Charles Dickens. It was kind of the, the best of times, worst of times story here a little bit. I want to talk, um, about the governor's recommended budget. So. By Oregon State statute, the, the governor needs to, um. Present a recommended budget the first week of December and she did that. It was released December second. And, um, these oftentimes can be a starting point. And remember the recommended budget still needs legislative approval, so it still has a, it needs to go through a process of approval. Um, the governor's talked about her three key priority areas. One has been homelessness and housing. Yeah, there's been mental behavioral health and addiction services and the third has been education. She's talked a little bit about transportation. Um, so her, I want to give you just a, a quick overview of her recommended budget in terms of education. We've been working closely with the governor's office for many months now on what we call the current service level. She did give us a commitment that she would, that she would, um, put this in her recommended budget and I want to just publicly thank her for that. So in terms of the state school fund, which is really the, the, probably the most consistent dollars we see coming in. We did see, um. A pretty significant increase in K twelve education around, um, in this recommended budget, eleven point four percent increase. So it's about a six hundred million dollar. Increase over the old, um, C S L numbers. That was really kind of a best of times. If we look at previous bienniums, so if we look back at twenty one, twenty three, it was a nine point one, ten point two is the current biennium dollar, um. Allocation for K twelve schools and this recommended budget puts us at eleven point three six. So that is, um. Grateful for that. This is, it was really good news and, and receiving this last week. The Student Success Act, um. Uh, also is seeing about a, a eleven percent increase there. Um, measure ninety eight in high school success will see a, a small increase as well district wide. And then, um, the awesome matching grants, and this is part of the reason we've done the long range facilities work. Uh, there's an increase in the matching funds. Remember the last three bond attempts. We qualified for a little over five point eight million dollars. But that it requires, um, you know, fifty point one percent, if you will, on that. So that number went up in the awesome matching grant also, and then seismic rehab grants, which we've taken advantage of pretty significantly. There's a hundred million dollar allocation statewide for that. So that's kind of the Charles Dickens first side of the side of the coin of good times. I want to talk about something that is, um. Exceedingly problematic in terms of our budget. And that is the impact on PERS costs. So there's about nine hundred employers in the state, um. That, um, pay into PERS. It's a state requirement to pay into PERS. So, you know, our board has, has done a great job. This, the bond sale, for example, now five years ago, the thirty two and a half million dollars we sold. You know, we made some, I think, wise decisions in terms of how we spend money. Um, however, in October, um, when the, at the PERS board meeting in October and when the final PERS rates. Were set. Um, we're seeing that that fund simply has done poorly. Two things were happening, um, really across, if we think about our district and probably across the state, there's been pretty significant payroll growth. And then the PERS investments, which are not managed by our team, they're managed by Milliman, who's an actuary for Oregon. They really underperformed. And so they returned about, you know, a little less than half of the projection. And so what that's created is now this interesting dichotomy where we have a pretty healthy, uh, recommended budget by the governor. But unfortunately, a significant cost drain. Um, Kate, the, the estimates right now are for K twelve employers across Oregon. It's about a sixty million, six hundred, excuse me, six hundred and seventy million dollar. Um, net. Cost to them with PERS. So if we think about that six hundred million dollar out additional allocation within the current service level, it's almost completely mitigated or, or wiped out, if you will, with these PERS costs. So that's really problematic. It makes our, um, it's going to make our budget process with the conversation around facilities. Even though there's excitement about some of the investments from the governor's office and we're not alone in this at all. It's impacting nearly every employer right now that participates in PERS. We have some work to do in the budget process. It's going to be a relatively complicated budget put together because of some of these, um, some of these issues we're working with. Uh, that will impact this biennium and likely, um, as we, as we look at some of the, the PERS investments. I would say could, could likely in, in also impact the following biennium that. Twenty seven, twenty nine biennium. So the, the, it's, we're in a long session right now and so advocacy is really, really critical, um. Technically, the advocacy happened starts really, they say in January, but it's been happening for many, many months to get here. And so I want to just talk about a couple of things that we need to continue to talk about. Special education funding. I'll talk about that in just a second here. That is a, a, um, a conversation we need to continue. With state legislators, with the governor's office and others. Uh, unfunded mandates is another one, um. Uh, legislators love to pass policy. And these policies oftentimes it'll say there's no impact, budget impact, when quite frankly, there are significant budget impacts. Um, I could talk about a couple of those with employment, but won't, won't spend time today to do that. You can read these, but mental behavioral health, workforce, um, hard to fill possessions, where literacy attendance, facilities and expanded summer opportunities. There's still, uh, I don't say confusion, but there's not clarity around summer learning again. They are going to allocate some funds, but there was kind of a winners and losers. Draw with this last year where, uh, somehow we ranked like toward the middle to the end of need. And some people had a significant amount of funds across the state and many had nothing. So that's an area we'll continue to work on. Relative to special education funding, so. We do have four. Out, four schools that are targeted schools with department education where, and, and they're in special education. So if we think about. All of the areas around, um, subgroups and, and content areas. Um, it's an area in which we know students need extra support. Um, Oregon has done something for a while that I would contend is probably illegal. I've spoken about this quite a bit, um, I'll say it again tonight. I D A, um, requires that we serve students that have. Identified needs that qualify for special education. Yet Oregon has put a cap and that cap's been there for a long time. But they've put a cap at eleven percent. So what that means is they fund the support for those students up to eleven percent of your population. That has never actually been legal in my opinion to do. Students have needs and we're. Um, our district has, um, a significantly higher percentage than eleven percent. So we continue to serve students and many of our board members have been, are pretty intimately aware of what that looks like. How we do that. Um, we are continuing to, um, we've kind of writ- written some legislative concepts, working with governor's office and legislators. To increase the cap to fifteen percent. That would align to a more equitable way to think if students have needs. The state really is required to provide the opportunity for us to serve those students. That eleven percent number has been there for decades. When there's a high probability that was probably about eleven percent statewide when that was there. So we're working on that piece. Another one's high cost disability. Right now we're about forty or fifty percent of reimbursement for high cost disability. What this basically means is we, when students come to us that have significant needs. We aren't reimbursed for those needs. Probably, well, we're certainly not reimbursed fully for the needs, about forty or fifty percent reimbursed for those. Uh, there's ver- there's interest, bipartisan interest in supporting high ca- high cost disability a hundred percent. So we're working on that. And then, um. Uh, regional inclusive services, we can talk about that later, but we have, um, again, students that have significant need. That, um, need to, we, we need to receive the, the funding to support the students, um. Adequately. So those are some things we're continuing to work on where I appreciate your advocacy with, with, uh, local and state legislators. We'll continue to do that through this session. And those are things we want to keep our eye on. Other than that, I just want to say thank you to our board. I appreciate everything you do to support our community and our kids, to our staff, to our community members, to our students. And wish everybody a, a very Merry Christmas. Happy New Year and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
You very much. Um, and then we'll move into directors reports, um. Director Shortcliff?
I don't have anything today. I got nothing and unsupervised children at home, so.
Director Crimmits?
Have some more to add over the things. We do wish you all Merry Christmas. All of you out there. And, uh, thank you for joining us and your interest. In, in what we do here. It's, it's important to us because we're partners together. So appreciate your, your coming out tonight.
Director Cupid?
No, no special report tonight.
Director Cotton?
There's already been thank yous, but. Tammy, thank you for hosting us. We, we always enjoy coming out here. You have a wonderful staff. And you're the right person for this building. And we know every year it's going to get better. So we appreciate that. I really like. The new vestibule and things. It's, it's really nice. Safety wise, it's, it's perfect. I also, um, wanted to thank Cheryl and Danielle and the business department. You guys are fabulous. It's not all districts get. Uh, such a high mark on their audits. So you guys have worked really hard. I appreciate that. And I, those folks that are on the building and sites committee, we will be having a meeting probably January. Or mid, early or mid part of January. We have some things to go over, particularly the facility plan. So. And everybody have a great Christmas.
Thank you very much. Um, and I too want to thank Principal Rasmussen for a wonderful time as always and, um. The artwork is just great. I, I know I already talked about that, so I'll stop gushing, but, and I also, um, just want to echo what Director Cotton said. We really have a fabulous CFO and, and Danielle, the whole team. And we're very thankful for that. We're also thankful for Superintendent Corden. Who is also very physically, physically minded and, um. Runs a tight ship and, uh, is also very extremely dedicated to our kids' safety and also their education. So I really thank him for that too. And, uh, with that. That the business portion of this meeting has concluded. Barring no objections, um, the meeting is adjourned and the board will reconvene in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six zero two I. It is the, um, superintendent check-in. Which we adhere to that schedule closely. Our next meeting will be January 8th, 2025, coming up quickly at Eastwood Elementary. So thank you so much for coming. This meeting is ended.